I'd like to call to order the July 21st, 2025 City Council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If you all rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today our roll call, we have Counselor Haugent is excused absence on the road tonight. Other five are here in person. We have one vacancy. If you all had a chance to look at tonight's agenda, I'm looking for an approval of the agenda.
So who?
Counselor Santiago makes a motion. Any seconds?
Second.
Council President Miller makes a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, we are at public comment. This is items that are not on the agenda. This is the place on the agenda where public is invited to speak to council regarding any matter not on the agenda and not scheduled for public hearing. Members of the public addressing council are requested to give their name and city of residence. Please try not to repeat questions to allow for more speakers. Speakers are to limit their testimony to five minutes as we are limited to 30 minutes total for all public comments. And I think the timer is working. Just to help, there is a timer there if you need that for help. Do we have some? We can. I would like to, I have my pink slip up here. I have a public comment. I'd like to start real quick. Tonight we are joined, we have a special guest in the audience, Andrew LaFrenz, if you would please come up. Stand in front of us, please.
All the way in front.
In special recognition of Andrew LaFrenz, Scapu City Council, for your outstanding service, dedication, and commitment to the citizens of Scapus, January 2023 to June 2025. Thank you, Andrew. I want to thank Andrew for his support. He came in when I did and it was a lot of fun getting to know him. Even was a professor for my son, so that was nice. And I want to thank you very much for your service. And here's your book, your memoir. Here, yeah, automatically send him the agenda and the link every meeting.
You're on the permanent mailing list, don't worry.
And make sure you send him a EDC and a planning, I guess, a couple of those committee applications. Okay, we've got a couple tonight. We're going to start with Stu Butler. If you want to come on up. Support, we speak into the microphone so they can hear you online and recorded. That mic will pick you up. If you'd like to name and city residence and then begin.
Hi, my name is Stu Butler. I live up on Keys Road and the instance has to do with lack of concern from the city dealing with the contractors for our houses. So my main complaint is the contractors are going to be contractors, but the lack of concern from the city, we ask questions, hey, they're vibrating on my house. My house is vibrating. Like the city engineer said it was my foundation. So I got a company to come out and says, you, I can't find anything wrong with your foundation. Your foundation is so solid. Go back to the city engineer. I have a complaint with that too. It's like when they were draining Rick Waters' property, back of my property. He, and I asked him, well, before you sign off on the permit, have him fix this, you know, work with it. And so they really didn't do anything. And then, so the engineer told me, well, you're going to have to go sue your neighbor. It's like, well, you guys permitted it. He said, well, I have no codes to get there. Well, I, being a plan review for City of Portland, I know if you want to do something, you do it. So the engineer could have done something if he wanted to. So then going back to the vibration and stuff, this has been going on over a year. I mean, don't you guys care about the way our houses fall apart? I mean, they're vibrating. I just, a simple thing, I called the county, just, can you just put a slow sign up? Because where they put the two roads together when they redid the water tower 10 years ago, maybe? I don't know how long it was, 15, 20 years ago? And the trucks come through there. If they would just slow down, it wouldn't vibrate my house. Like my daughter says, Dad, they're shaking the house. And they're just running a track hoe across the property where they're putting the new development in. So I just wish there was, be a little bit more concerned from that. And then also the fireworks. I wish they would do something about the fireworks. They used to have a police officers come by and patrol, and in the last five years, they just don't do anything at all. They came, I called 911. I went, asked my neighbor, can you please come by? You know, knock it off. He said, I'll knock it off. We did it anyway. The police did come by this time. But I just wish they would do something more about that too. But that's the overall thing. They just, like the city, I know that a lot of, why are we building the city up so much too? Is it for pensions? Is it all about that money? Or how come we're not making more of a livable city versus, you know, just packing people in more and the lack of, I know I'm paying $5,000 a year in taxes. It seems like you care less about me. That's why I make complaints. I wish they could do something about it. Or someone respond back and say, hey, we've done something. We're working behind the scenes. I've talked to the city manager, super nice guy, love you, but nothing seems to get done. I just, if, maybe there is stuff behind the wheels that at least respond back and say, hey, we're working on it. Got some roadblocks, whatever it takes. Much appreciated. Like you're part of the community versus like this NTT, like the government, it's all about pensions and their wages. And they, we're just a bunch of, we're the conduit to the money. It's how you feel.
Thank you, Stu.
You have any questions, I mean?
I'll talk with city manager and we'll see if we can come up with some answers for you. I mean, I think we know where you are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll address, because I'm hoping there are some answers that, that maybe you don't know about, that we've been working on. So hopefully we can come up with something for you.
Well, like, you know, I found the vibration, so it sounds like the contractors know that we're sitting on a big shell up there. You know, it's like, how come that wasn't taken care of during the engineer? How come the engineer doesn't say, wait, we got to do something different? Maybe we just need to put smaller tractors in there. Do something, go slower. Help, help these people out. Not their fault that land is the way it is, the geography. But if they could do something to help.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Stu. You got another one? Timothy Watkins, if you'd like to come up?
Good evening, everybody.
Go ahead.
Yeah. My same concerns are the same as you here as far as the vibration. And I'm certain to see settle in my, in my house is, seems like the walls were separating from the, from the floor. It seems like, you know, Lord knows what's going, what's going on underneath. I was just wondering, like, who's going to be responsible if I have damage under there for this? I haven't had an engineer, anyone come out yet, you know? So those are some of my concerns. And doors are, my back doors are now are sticking and won't even close always. Like I have to lift it up to close it. And I'm right, I'm right behind there. As a matter of fact, there's a, there's an earth mover right, parked right in front of my, right on my fence line as we speak, you know? But today was, my mother-in-law is there all day. We're at work. We don't get the brunt of it until 20, 30 minutes after work when we get home. So it's not so bad for us, but you know, my mother-in-law, I mean, my mother, my mother lives there. And it's just, she's like, it's like really loud. And today was the loudest she's ever heard it, you know? So, and then, and I didn't hit on this, but Stu brought up a good thing about the fireworks. I mean, yeah, you know, it's supposed to be quiet, but I know they're shooting off illegal fireworks, you know? Because those are really loud as well. So, and those are my own, my concerns on the property back there. So I just don't want to be responsible for having to rebuild my foundation. You know, I just moved in the house three years ago. And what brought me out to Scapus was the field in the backyard in the first place, the view. But now it's gone. I can accept that. That's not a problem. But it's just hard to deal with foundation problems in the future, that's all. And how would that would be addressed later on?
Great. Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a question. Sir, is this in relation to the water treatment construction or is this in relation to the housing?
Both. I mean, even the water treatment, I can feel it, I can feel it from where I'm at as well. And the construction. Construction is the worst part. You know, like I said, there, I have earth movers right on my fence line all day. I have a camera back there that shows them, you know? I mean, I understand they have to move them, but man, I don't know how, what we can do about all that vibration. I'm just worried about my home.
No, absolutely. Understood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
David Archered, you said it right?
Name is David Archered, wife Teresa. We live at 52290 Southwest Keys Road. Right across the street on Keys from the big construction. First of all, this is way off the subject. I want to thank you for actually doing the pledge allegiance. That was way cool. You don't see that anymore. Anyway, what I have is pictures of all the damage so far to my house. I'll just read this considering I didn't get an A in political speech and debate, so I'll just read it as quick as I just have put out. Our beautiful home on 52290 Southwest Keys Road is breaking apart at the walls, the ceilings, the light fixtures literally have fallen out of the master bathroom. Other than ceiling, concrete is cracking, stonework is breaking apart, molding's coming apart everywhere. Horrible vibrations as I watch the water on my nightstand shake to the point it moves across my nightstand. Open up the refrigerator on the other end of the house and watch the milk shaking. The vibrations are just relentless and the construction is constant. As I was blessed to be able to retire this year, but I'm wondering if it was, because I'm one of these workaholics. It's had one week off in 20 and a half years. This is my vacation now. I have less than three things hanging in the whole house because I love clean walls. On these three wall, three things hanging, I watch them move. I love the look of the custom painted walls because I'm a perfectionist. I even created the paint and custom colors just for the inside of the house. Our house, that clean, uncluttered look, the rounded corners on the side of the hallways that I had custom done. And now I have cracks all the way to my lofted ceilings at 12 feet. Looked up at the 12-foot section, I see the whole ceiling separating from the walls as well. I get to vacuum up the sheet rock and paint from the floor every three days. I see these cracks getting larger every day. And it just literally drives me nuts because I'm a anal perfectionist. And I make show cars, so I know how perfect everything is. I'm the idiot that pressure washes his driveway in the winter because I can't stand moss on my driveway. So I know there was no cracks before this construction. I have all the pictures to prove it because I take pictures of my car on those driveways. The nails in the ceiling in the master bedroom keep starting to work their way out, so I put them back up. Then next thing I know, the nails in the ceiling of the master bathroom fall all the way out onto the granite countertops and sheet rock. I put caulking on them, put them up there, sealed them back up. It lasted three weeks. I have all the pictures of all the holes and all the damage in the house, and I'm making light of it. I'm trying to be as light as possible about it because I love our house and it's literally being destroyed in front of my very eyes. I have all the vibrations on videos. I have videos looking out the master bathroom window as the trucks pull up and you can watch the curtains or the shade lines shake because of these trucks. I start to wonder if my house is sitting on ball bearings. There was never a problem ever before, not with the school buses, not anything else. Now all of a sudden, things are going crazy. I mean, I have cracks in my ceilings and on my walls and from my molding and my rock on the side of the house coming apart from the house. My whole house is literally coming apart. It's, it's mind blowing, like inch wide gaps. I can go on and on. Literally, I start, even when I think about it, I start getting so upset that, that, like I said, this is, this is one of the reasons I didn't get an A. It's because when things I'm passionate about, and I feel that I'm probably just going to be speaking, just going to go off on the wayside. It, it's kind of upsetting because nobody has to live through it. I'm there every single day to the point that she gets migraine so bad for it. I had to take her into the ER two weeks ago because our house was shaking so bad. As she walked into the bathroom and a nail almost fell on her head as she was leaning towards the mirror. That's after the light fixture came out of the ceiling. This is how bad our house shakes. It is literally, we have to get in the car and drive away just to keep our sanity. It is insane. And now I look, like I said, every time I come in there, I go, why? This house was just sitting here. And the day I bought it, the, the real estate guy goes, man, I love the decoration they put in the front yard. Those deer almost look real. I go, dude, they are. And the four deer stood up. That was in my front yard. Now I see them maybe about every two or three weeks because there's a creek behind my house. I'm just here to say, this construction has destroyed my way of life, our retirement. There is thousands upon thousands of dollars damaged to our house. Who's going to cover this? Please don't say my insurance, because I already found that out when the county's tree hit our house, how bad they can skate out of that. County didn't cover it. I found out if you're going to sue the county in 300 days, there's a law. That after that, they're Scott free. I was left with an $81,000 bill. So I'm not going to let this happen this time. You need to somehow figure out why this is happening and stop it from happening because before the house comes down on top. I can give anybody that wants the videos or any of this, I left my email up there. I can send you all these pictures, all the insane amount of videos I have. You won't like it. You won't like it.
Can you leave some pictures with city manager Ben, just so I can look at them later?
And even though you have signs up there for the truck drivers not to use Jake Brakes, guess what? They can't read.
Good information. Thank you.
Anyway, do you have any questions for me?
Not at this time. Typically, we'll take all your information and we'll talk and hopefully we can get back something. Pull our information and get back to you guys.
Thanks again.
Thanks for.
And thanks again for actually doing the pledge allegiance. I've seen that.
One more. James Meyer, Meyer, I guess. Thanks. Yeah, we try to stick to that. You guys have been doing pretty good, so I, we just kind of keep it for everybody.
I have a lot to say, so I'm going to talk quick.
Well, go for it.
My name is James Meyer. I live 52259 Southwest Keys Road. If you're familiar with the user project, I live on the southeast corner of it, right where everything comes in and enters. I have pictures right here of quarter inch cracks in my walls. An eighth inch crack running the span of my 14-foot wide living dining room ceiling. Okay, this is just some of them. My kitchen counter is, has now a 3/8, 3/16 inch crack on one side and has sunk in a quarter inch. My house was built in 1931. It has wood on wood on the ground foundation. The damage that that construction is doing is not my fault. I am so perturbed that people that work for this city, and please take it as personally as you can feel like it. Because imagine somebody walking up to your house and whacking it with a car or a truck and doing it day after day after day after day. And the city officials, officials who are supposed to protect you and supposed to stand up for you, say, sorry, there's nothing we can do. They're following their permits. They're within their permits. Well, I tell you what, they're not within their permits. This is just some of the dust. I'm going to put everybody on notice right now. I have ring cameras up to record 24/7 of all the BS that's going on over there. Did you forget to mention the green space back there where they have, what I was understood to have a protected frog and the spring doesn't flow anymore?
Yeah. The spring is behind my house that I was leaving a lot of it locked down.
I have contacted the city people, the people that work for the city. And the response was first, oh crap, this ain't good. We might have to stop construction and see what's going on. Suddenly a week later is, oh, we can't do nothing. Sorry, you're going to have to contact them. And they say, well, I have to contact the owner. And the owner said, well, I have to contact the construction company. And I have to contact the city. And the city says I have to contact the owner. And it's a big circle. Well, you know what? This is ruining my house beyond repair, beyond repair. Right now, a conservative estimate is going to be about $100,000. My entire upstairs needs to be rebuilt, not counting the bottom. So you know, because I do have ring cameras that record everything, the conversation with the lead over there is, yeah, dude, you're sitting on a bowl of jello. The seismic activity caused by their equipment is measuring over a 4.0 earthquake. And when you have that for 200, 300 seconds a week or a day, imagine what that does to your house that was not built per seismic standards because it was built, you know, almost 100 years ago. I apologize for my attitude, but I have tried and I've tried and I've tried to talk to specific people. I don't want to call you up, but Dave Nabit, man, I've talked to Chris a number of times. And it's like, eh, sorry, can't do nothing for you. You, you people work for the residents, not for construction companies coming in and building things. First off, you work for the residents, not for them. And when they're coming in, wronging so many residents, I know of at least six different people, now seven, who have complaints about cracking in their house. And if this is the first you've heard about it, then that's a shame because I've been talking about this for over a year. My question to all of you is what are you going to do about it? Why do we have to come down here and beg and plead for our city council who represents us to actually represent us? Why? Pictures, if you'd like. This dust, this dust goes on every day. These cracks, these cracks were not there when I moved in and they weren't there two years ago. I painted the entire house. I know that house like the back of my hand.
I appreciate it. Yeah.
You don't understand, sir. You can say I appreciate it, but you don't. You can't possibly comprehend unless you have somebody coming up to your house and literally freaking hitting it with a hammer and hitting it with a car every day. And there's nothing you can do about it because I can't call the police. I can't talk to my city. All I can do is hire an attorney and try to sue them. That's, that's, that's my only recourse?
Yeah, I don't know what the only recourse is. And that's why we're, you, we've heard you guys tonight and we, I'm sure we're all interested. We have members on this council that live close by too. And we're all Scapu city resident. We, this isn't a job, you know, this isn't our job.
I understand. This is volunteer work for you.
Right.
And I appreciate it.
But.
However, the frustration point, I mean, I have had stuff literally shaken off my shelves. I've now bought a big pot and packed up things from my upstairs and things from my dining room, my china hutch. My part of my wine collection, I have, I have some liquor collections worth $1,000. I packed it all up because I'm afraid that my front, my living room is going to fall. I have a three-inch drop in my roof now. It goes from the edge and it goes, like three inches. This is real. And this is because of the construction and whatever is, because of the makeup of our ground around it. This is not just our imagination. And I beseech you, and I pray that you all hear us tonight and you actually take some action and represent us. I'm begging, man. This is insanity.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would you like these?
Please.
There are many, many, many more.
I have no ideas, Stu. I mean, this is, you know, I'm not saying it's the first I've heard, but this is stuff we have to find out. This is kind of above my pay grade right now to know what the rules are, policies and everything. And before we speak, say something wrong or get it out there. We want to look into it a little bit more. I need some more information. Well, thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
We do hear you. Yeah. Well, thank you. We'll have to end the public comment for now. For one, when you aren't on the microphone, they don't get to hear. And we have important people that want to hear that as well. And so all this is on the record. This will be recorded. Everybody can listen to it now. And can you do it in the microphone so our person online can hear?
This is James Meyer again. I have had conversations with city officials with all parties involved with the construction from George Dunkle to Dave Cady to Bruce, I'm not recalling his last name right now, with David Weekly. Several people at IE Construction, which is the construction company that's actually in the work. And when I spoke to the head at IE Construction, Reno, his quote was, after, after saying all that I had to say and whatnot, his quote was, go ahead and sue us. We're the big fish. We're a national company. We're going to tie you up for court in 10 years and you're not going to get nothing. That's their attitude, sir. That's what we're up against.
All right. Thank you.
Million-dollar companies against families just trying to survive and live a life with their house.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time. I really hope you have heard us and.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, we are now closing public comments. Thanks again. Give a second here to just regroup. Now we're on, if you want to take a look at tonight's consent agenda, it's June 16th, 2025 City Council meeting minutes and reappointment of Brian Rosenthal and Christine Collins, the Economic Development Committee, looking for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Counselor Holmes to approve the consent agenda. Any seconds? Second by Counselor Santiago. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to number two. Public Works vehicle purchase. Public Works Director Dave Sukow is online. And if you'd like to take the staff report?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. So as you mentioned, tonight, Public Works is seeking council's approval for the purchase of a small to mid-sized dump truck. This truck has a 19,000-pound GBW. We currently have one that would be slightly smaller than this. It's a 2008. It goes out daily. It is in hot demand, and so we are in need of another one of these trucks. This truck will be equipped with a plow and sander, so it will be another tool in the arsenal for winter storm, you know, or maintenance. So anyways, what we've done here is I asked Charlotte to assist with this. She reached out to many, many dealers within the Pacific Northwest, including dealers that we work with on a regular basis. As far as Chevrolet goes, they do not offer a gasoline version. Hopefully you've read the staff report and the reasoning why gasoline is preferred over diesel. Dodge, none of the Dodge dealer or Dodge Ram got back to us. And so we were left with Ford, which Ford does make a quality product. Three numbers were solicited or received. We'd like to continue with the Northside Ford. It is the lowest quote in the recommendation, though there is an error. It shows a balance request of 95,000. That would be 97,20466 for a correction, which is noted in the comparisons in the staff report. That would be ninety-seven, two oh four sixty-six for a correction, which is noted in the comparisons in the staff report. And I can answer any questions.
Maybe there's a special discount I didn't see.
There is, yes. For government entities, we receive the additional state contract discount.
Thank you, Dave.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor President Miller.
I move council approve the purchase of the Ford F five fifty dump truck for the price of ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and four dollars and sixty-six cents.
Also, I counsel President Miller to approve the purchase of the Ford F five fifty dump truck for the price of ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and four dollars and sixty-six cents. Any second? Second by Councilor Santiago. Discussion?
Two, one question, Mayor. Dave, was this within the anticipated budget?
Yeah, we actually, no, we budgeted one ninety for it. We weren't sure what the sanding equipment was going to cost. Now that we do, we, we anticipated one twenty-five, but did have a large contingency in the budget, so this is well within it. There will be some additional items that we'll need to purchase that aren't included in this, such as two-way radios and some emergency lighting, those things we do within other vendors and ourselves for our in-house staff. So there'll probably be another three to four thousand in equipment that we'll put on that the dealer does not. But yeah, this is well under and I was quite pleased with the numbers that we received.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my question. Uh, any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to number three, we've got Resolution twenty-five dash eleven, a resolution of the Council of the City of Scapu authorizing the city manager to make application to DLCD to the TGM grant program to update the TSP. Tonight, we're joined by Community Development Director Lori Oliver Joseph with the staff report.
Right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I guess so I have Resolution twenty-five eleven that I'm bringing you tonight. This passage of this resolution would allow them to sign the grant application on behalf of the city for an updated transportation system plan. The last time we updated it was in two thousand sixteen. It hasn't been, you know, a terribly long time. However, we do want to request this grant funding to update that plan to take into consideration the UGB expansion area, to integrate our updated population and job growth forecasts, to update our capital improvement plan, to reflect projects that have been completed and to, pardon me, and to add new projects and as well as look at potentially creating an industrial benefit zone, which would establish an additional funding mechanism to support transportation infrastructure for our industrial properties. And then also to review and update the city's street scape standards specifically in the downtown overlay, although you'll, you'll hear in my next presentation, that's incorporated into another grant opportunity as well. This grant is due, is due next week on July thirty-first. There would not be a fiscal impact to our budget. The city's going to request two hundred and fifty thousand to cover this, which is kind of a standard price for TSPs in general. We may have some savings in that because it is an update to a plant that's not terribly old. The grant match would be twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirteen. And the city can provide in-kind match of labor and materials for that. That would include staff time to work on the grant project as well as any kind of incidentals, travel, postage, supplies, printing. It also can account for the stakeholder advisory committee's volunteer hours as well. Again, so staff just recommends that council adopt Resolution twenty-five eleven, allowing the city manager to make application to the TGM grant program.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Do we, what happens, I mean, with the chances, I mean, a grant, you know, you don't know if you're going to get it.
Yep.
So what happens if we don't get it?
Yeah, it is highly competitive. This is an annual grant program. I already had a TSP assessment completed, which is where you have someone from DLCD who reviews your current TSP and kind of does a summary of, of what sections need to be updated, et cetera. There, there was a comment in there and I would need to follow up to see what it is. But she did mention if this was not grant funded, that there could be other ODOT funding mechanisms available. Otherwise, we would wait and we would apply the following year.
Okay, that was kind of my question. And do we fill the two hundred and fifty says pretty standard that should cover?
Yes.
Everything that.
I would think for ours, because it is an update, that would be at the high end. But it was the recommended amount that we request based on our transportation engineer that the city contracts with. Who did our first TSP or our twenty sixteen TSP.
Do they ever come through with like, oh, we'll give you half? I mean, is it, it's all or nothing? Do you think they typically give you two hundred and fifty?
I think they do typically award the requested amount.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Holmes?
Yeah, Lori, I have a question about the timing. So you have yet to bring, I think, the urban growth recommendations before council. Then it's got to go through the county for approval.
Correct.
So do these, could this transportation study and the urban growth?
Yeah, no, that's a great, that's a great question. They are going to want to see that that's done before the project gets into the part where they're actually working in the UGB area. The project needs to be completed by twenty twenty-eight. My understanding is that grants due July thirty-first, we would get notification of award in September. The process to refine the scope and sign the actual contracts with ODOT can take up to nine months to a year. So I think we are well within that timeframe to be complete on our UGB expansion by that time. So, and, and I will make sure in the grant application, I'm spelling out our timeline. Obviously, things can slide a bit, as we've seen. But in terms of a forty-four acre UGB expansion, I'm not feeling like it's gonna, you know, once we enter the adoption timeframe, that it's going to slip that far.
Okay, so goal would be to have the UGB expansion process complete by September twenty-six.
I mean, I'd like to have it way over that, but yes, absolutely.
Okay. Would we be at risk if, say, anything did get hung up in the UGB expansion process? Would we feel this risk of losing this and then be less competitive in the next?
I don't know that we would lose it so much because we would still probably be in process for that adoption period. Also, the other thing is the areas we're looking to expand into have significant road networks adjacent to them. So really, it would be looking at any internal kind of streets to those areas. In other words, it wouldn't be super consequential, in my opinion, if those carve-outs for the forty-four acres UGB expansion weren't finalized when we were rolling into the beginning of this.
And you said this like completion by twenty twenty-eight of the, the study?
Of the TSP update.
The update and us adopting it. Any more questions?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Santiago.
I move that council adopt Resolution twenty-five dash eleven, a resolution of the Council of the City of Scapu authorizing the city manager to make application to the Department of Land Conservation and Department's TGM grant program to update the city's TSP.
I have a motion by Councilor Santiago to approve Resolution number twenty-five dash eleven. Any seconds? I come by Councilor Jacobs. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye, aye, approved. I mean, opposed? Approved. Thank you. Thank you, Lori.
Double.
Um, moving on to the next one, another one for you. Resolution number twenty-five dash twelve, a resolution for, of this Council of the City of Scapu authorizing the city manager to make application to DLCD to the TGM grant program to develop a downtown strategic plan. Community Director, Community Development Director Lori Oliver Joseph, again with the staff report.
Yes, of course. Again, so I'm bringing you Resolution twenty-five twelve. Background, so a major focus of the Economic Development Committee for the last few years has been just a lot of discussions around where is downtown Scapu? Do we have the right downtown overlay boundary? We do have downtown overlay development code, which regulates design standards in the downtown overlay, street scape standards. New, you know, allows for reductions in parking in certain blocks. And so they really wanted to revamp that and look at it and, and talk about kind of what, what we want Scapu to look like, the downtown area and programming for the area as well. So I think you have heard from them that this is an interest. It became an adopted council goal this last year, Goal four point one, develop a downtown strategic plan. What this will do for us, too, is that once we have this plan in place, the city's going to be well positioned to apply for grants to do projects downtown. There's Main Street grants we can apply for. Also, there are a number of projects listed in our urban renewal plan that would occur within this downtown overlay boundary that we could start implementing some of our larger projects in coming years when that pot really starts to fatten up. So this plan specifically will seek to review and make updates to the downtown overlay, possibly the boundary, definitely the code language around design and aesthetic requirements, assess parking standards in the downtown core, make recommendations for potential reductions to parking requirements for businesses in certain areas or possibly the whole downtown overlay area. Also, I wanted to have, you know, look at possible areas for a public parking lot because if we're talking about reducing parking standards, they need to be able to park and then walk to the businesses that they're visiting. Make recommendations on attracting and retaining businesses as well as supporting entrepreneurs and startups. Propose incentives to encourage redevelopment and focus areas of downtown. I think this gravel lot behind us is, you know, high, high on the list for having something occur there. And then update, like I mentioned before, for the TSP, update street scape standards for the downtown area. And really, this is kind of with this focus of connecting the city center to the city's growing trail network and making that kind of a, you know, a pinnacle for the city. So again, this is on the exact same timeline as the other grant, July thirty-first. It is due, no fiscal impact, impact again, that will be staff in-kind, time spent on the project as the match, as well as committee members. And staff does recommend that council adopt this resolution to allow the city manager to make this grant application.
Thank you. One question. I, will they kind of work together at the same time? Because there's some overlay, I mean, with the, with transportation, obviously, for downtown.
That's what I'm thinking and depending, I mean, if we were to be extremely fortunate and have both awarded during the same cycle, I do see that they could fit pretty well together. Once there's just the one component on the street scape standards for the downtown plan, once that was done, it would feed right into the TSP update. So I don't, this would not take as long, I don't think, as the TSP update would take.
And I noticed during your report, you were talking about along the railroad there. Is there still talk about that possibly being parking?
There, there is, and I just reached out to Carrie Goodman with ODOT recently for an update and it's still with the rail, as legal counsel reviewing the dedication deed language. So I don't know what's taking them so long, other than it's the rail.
Yes.
Just to clarify, is that the transfer of ownership?
Yeah.
That's still pending, though.
Still.
He just laid off a bunch of ODOT people, so.
That's what I question, too. Is this all through ODOT, through the state?
Uh, it's, it's dual, so it's, it's a joint program between ODOT and DLCD.
And their funding through the budget, they didn't make any drastic cuts?
This funding for this year has not been affected.
And.
I have one other thing I wanted to bring up. Jeanette reached out and had some good questions around this topic tonight. One thing she raised, and I wanted to run it by you all because it is a change I can make now before I submit the grant, was, you know, this really is an implementation plan and not just a strategic plan. And so we had some discussion about, should we call this the downtown improvement plan? Because hopefully it would lead to improvements. So does that sound better to you all for me to have the, the name of the plan and the project to name as it runs through the grant cycle as the Scapu's downtown improvement plan? Would you, would you prefer that over a strategic plan?
Do you see any reason why the word strategic would help? I mean, with this, again, like you said, the other one, it allows us to help go out and get grants. If it's just called a downtown improvement plan, will that allow us to get grants as well?
It's negligible in terms of what it can allow us to do. It's just a, you know, a preference, really.
And with other strategic plans with EDC, I mean, it makes sense to separate them?
Yeah, and it's just for me, strategic, it's just kind of the idea. To me, it's like an implementation improvement plan, it's more of action, in action. So that's my thought.
I don't have a problem changing it to downtown improvement plan.
Okay. Any other strong opinions, one way or the other?
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I do have a question about kind of the scope of the plan.
Sure.
Like, as we go through this exercise, will they be suggesting any other areas that we might want to target for commercial development? That's kind of outside the downtown core?
This really is looking at the downtown core.
Okay.
Right? So your downtown is going to be your walkable, bikeable, compact, mixed use, you know, where your programming happens, kind of this core of the city historically. So this is where we have not a lot, but our historic buildings. So it really is this. The other areas, obviously, we need as well and complement this, but this is really looking at the downtown core.
Will this help to define the downtown core?
It will. Yeah.
Versus what's already what we consider the downtown.
Right.
Change.
Yep, it'll be a fresh look at all of that.
Mayor?
Council President?
I move that council adopt Resolution twenty-five dash twelve, a resolution of the Council of the City of Scapu authorizing the city manager to make application to the Department of Land Conservation and Development's TGM grant program to develop a downtown strategic plan, also known as a downtown improvement plan.
Motion by Council President Miller and a second by Council Santiago to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash twelve. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion carries. Thanks.
Say any of the. Want him to read more.
I was going to say one when we got this.
No, it's a.
The vacancy for the, the council position, but since she went over everything and it will be, this will be in the book. People can read the resolution of council, why we're doing it, all the wherethes. Okay, I can, for you then, now therefore be resolved. The City of Scapu's council hereby authorize the city manager to apply the, to the Transportation Growth Management Grant Program from the Department of Land Conservation and Development on behalf of the city to develop a downtown improvement plan, passed and adopted by Scapu City Council on this day of July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. But, thank you. I think we have one more for you, the most important one. Consideration of Resolution twenty-five dash thirteen for declaring surplus property of the planning department. Community Development Director Lori Oliver Joseph, again with the staff report.
Yes, bringing you Resolution twenty-five thirteen. We have a, a very old Jeep Wrangler. It's from nineteen ninety-nine. It's had a check engine light on for quite some time. It's very elusive. Had it checked out five times. They can't figure it out. Anyhow, so this year is very exciting. We did get forty thousand in the budget to replace it. So I am getting quotes and working through that process. So anyhow, this is just to declare it as surplus as we are required to do. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Is that cute, little red one?
It is. It's cute.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Holmes?
I move council approve Resolution twenty-five thirteen, a resolution declaring planning department surplus property.
A motion by Councilor Holmes to approve Resolution twenty-five dash thirteen, a resolution declaring planning department surplus property. Any seconds? Second by Councilor Jacobs. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye, aye, opposed, motion passes. And for Jeanette, now therefore be it resolved. City of Scapu is hereby. Motion passes, and for Jeanette, now therefore be it resolved, city of scapus hereby declares a nineteen ninety Jeep Wrangler VIN number one J four F F two eight S four X L five six nine nine zero two as surplus and direct to the city manager or designated to dispose of surplus property pursuant to resolution dash twenty five dash thirteen as the city manager or designated and themes appropriate.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay. You know, resolution, okay, resolution twenty five fourteen. Uh, the resolution declaring a vacant position on the city council for the city scapus. Um, as you all know, we lost a dear member of our council, um, to the city of Warren, or Warren, and so we have an opening. So, um, to open up the position, we need to make a resolution to declare it vacant. So I'm looking for a motion to approve resolution twenty five dash fourteen.
Mr. Mayor?
Council President Miller?
I move the council approve resolution dash twenty, twenty five dash fourteen.
Uh, motion by Council President Miller, resolution declaring a vacant position on the city council for the city of scapus, any seconds? Second by Council Santiago, any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, we will get with, um, Susan on scheduling it then. We will have, um, interviews here, um. By looking at the meetings, if I can just look real quick, we thought if a month from now, maybe look at the first meeting in September, that gives them about, open it for four weeks, starting now, and then ending in, um, we can review them for about a week and then have them, have the interviews on September fourth, whatever that's Monday, as if there's not a lot of other stuff. I don't think it's the fourth. Does that sound okay with everybody? September second.
Day after Labor Day.
If we keep the meeting, um, but that means if we open up applications and have them go, if we could do it August eighteenth, we'd have to do it during the regular session, and that only gives them one, two, three weeks to get their applications in.
I think your original timing works well.
And if, if September second, if there's a lot, um, well, let's look at work sessions and see about doing it before a work session.
I have a question, just what happens if we get no interest? Are we?
Maybe we should be. Should we be recruiting?
I'm just saying, if no one is interested, are we able to continue as a council of six versus a council of seven? Can we just keep it open indefinitely?
Maybe we re, re, rolling.
We've already had an application.
Oh, that's wonderful, thank you.
Yeah.
It's not official.
But yeah, I think.
But it will be after this.
If we get none, or, or if we, I mean, if you get two people, do you have to pick one? If you're not happy with either one, it's not like a job and you have to pick one, right?
Okay.
And it's open for his, his role, do we? Probably not. It was open till the next election cycle, which is a year from October.
I think he, Andrew and Kim are on the same election cycle.
So it will be about a year and a half term, almost, and, um, we'll get people, if we don't, we'll reopen it up, maybe a month at a time, try to recruit. Yeah.
Thank you.
Get a deadline, enough time that you can get them into our next, that September second packet. Okay, we've got a couple new here, consideration, consideration of resolutions twenty five dash fifteen, twenty five dash sixteen, twenty five dash seventeen, twenty five dash eighteen, twenty to five dash nineteen, and twenty five dash twenty, for the purpose of establishing an official compensation package for cert public officials. City manager Ben Burgner with the explanation and staff report.
All right, yeah, the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, uh, several months ago issued an opinion, advisory opinion, based off a question that another, uh, city's mayor had sent on about a couple things, of which then the legal cities, legal counsel Jamie Pierce followed up to the Oregon Government Ethics Commission with some questions about, uh, a ruling response to that city, which then flowed into the whole state, kind of, oh, by the way, we need to do something, uh, that hasn't, these people weren't doing at this point. So we put a stop, the, the advisory opinion said that mills, um, little extra little things that are provided, you know, pens, whatever, as part of an elected or staff or appointed officials is a form of compensation, they're not allowed ethically unless there is a compensation package that has been formally adopted. So that was the direction that we were given, was to go through and just, this is something we've historically been doing, is providing mills at meetings when it's during lunch or dinnertime, such as normally like night during work session, we would have had, or the E D C during lunch, um, at Christmas party type or the party, holiday parties, that if you get a pen or a shirt or something, um, abnormal value that, uh, we just need to have this identified, that it is the city's policy to allow that as part of an official compensation package for all the designated areas. Now with the council, we separated this into four different resolutions because, uh, another part of that is you can't vote on your own compensation package since you're the decision maker on that. So we had to separate that originally, it's gonna be separated between two sides of councils, but we had a vacant position, I was, I was having a hard time figuring out how to get majority. And even more so with Joel Gont, it works out that we separated by sets of two as opposed to sets of three, the mayor separate, and then appointed officials and staff. So we actually ended up with six, seven resolutions to hit all the areas, being the council, the mayor, the staff, and appointed officials, um, to allow for things like said, mills as part of our cost of doing business, um, or shirts, other things that are related to this city business. Uh, that says here, city logo, pants, hats, other tokens, often distributed officials. Any questions, I think that sums it up.
I mean, it, it says appointed officials, board commission members, it's not written, but it gets assumed committee members too.
Right, the way that she identified the last resolution was just calling public officials, all other public officials, so that's appointed, anything that doesn't qualify as an elected, council, mayor, city staff, they are still appointed or public officials, so that does cover committees, it covers all other sizes committees, so any other identification that we can give them. Uh, another main part of that, under the resolution voting structure, um, it is important, so just kind of, if you want to, when we go through this, just to read through that, um, you cannot vote on your own resolution, so if it's affecting your position, we had, since we don't have council seats, some cities actually have identified one, two, three, we didn't have that, it's just all open, we just have three available every, at their election. Um, we just identified it by your name and the seat that you fill. So if you're on that resolution, and then all people who fill your seat going forward, uh, you cannot vote on that one, you need to declare a, uh, conflict of interest, refrain from discussion or vote. Um, one unique one is under the mayors, that you can still vote on that if you're not the mayor. No, you cannot, but if you are a council considering potentially running for the mayor in the future, whether you're not or not, if you're just considering that you would declare a potential conflict of interest, but you can still. Um, they just have to know.
Hopefully you all don't, because then we wouldn't have enough people here to vote.
Right.
But.
You don't get the.
So kind of a procedural area, um, I worked with Ashley, our city council on this. Um, she helped prepare the staff report and the drafts and gave everything out there for context. She provided the legal cities, uh, Oregon, so, Oregon Government Ethics Commission's response to legal cities, she provided a couple other opinions talking about compensation packages that demonstrate that you can't vote on your own, but you can vote as long as you're on, get these things through. Um, so yeah, we got a little string of these resolutions, just to feel, get back to business as we were doing. It's for the public record, it's not setting stipends, those listening to the council at this point, that's, that's not what this is going through, this is just to go through what we historically have already done, but to set it up as an official policy.
Ben, do you mind if I expand a little bit, just to put it on the record? So, um, exactly, so we are a non-paid council, we're all volunteer. I'm just stating this for the record and the future, the YouTube videos and the future viewers of those YouTube videos. So, uh, the city traditionally has, um, bought us dinner to the tune of like, what, ten, twelve dollars for meal? Yeah, or.
Not every meeting, but.
Right, not every meeting, it's only when we have a work session that starts at six and then council meeting starts at seven. And the reason for that was because, you know, a lot of us have regular jobs, um, since, you know, we don't get paid for council, of course, and it's pretty much impossible to be able to have dinner and then make it here at six, and then sometimes we don't get done until, you know, nine P M. or at times even later. So I just want to make that, sure that's clear to the public too, that this is a very, you know, low, low cost to the city in, in consideration for, you know, just starting early, when we would normally have time to, you know, be at home and having dinner in between that six and seven hour.
And also, we're like, when we have an E D C committee that is helping us do a lot of work, that we provide bagels at a lunchtime meeting once a month or, or, or less, um, which I think is fair to, and, and like our city town meeting, to have some food for our, all the volunteers, all the community, that's open to all the community to come, and so this is nothing, what we haven't already been doing. Um, we're not the only ones having to do this, and I think she modeled it after some other cities as well. So, um, it's kind of in line with all the other cities.
Question on, um, just, if you can just explain, just for the record, is it section A official compensation? Um, I know in the past we've talked about possible benefits, that, you know, compensation, you know, that that could be something, but I just, can you explain section A for us in your, under ours, uh, two, four, four, zero, forty, two, A? That's page forty one.
Are you talking about two, forty, four, zero?
Yeah, so the term official, yeah, the term official compensation package, because that's what we're approving, right? And I just.
Right, so this isn't, uh, official compensation package is any benefit that a public official may receive.
It says wages and benefits here, that's what.
Right, it can be, it can be mills, it can be anything, it's any benefit that you're receiving as, specifically because you have this position, you wouldn't get it unless you had, but, or you have this position. Um, or same thing with staff or appointed, or, uh, public officials, other public officials, committee members. So that does, it could include health benefits, it could include stipends, that's how we have started fighting this one. And we're taking the, the other benefits side, we're getting those mills as part of your duties as, as a miller, because you're not able to get otherwise, it's just as part of doing business during a meal time that we're providing those. And so this does not, uh, to do anything with stipends or health, that would be a separate, yes, it'd still be part of a compensation package, but it's not part of this one that we're proposing here.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that it's what we're doing, it's not an overall statement, but right now we're just doing the food.
Right, the, the O G E C clarified that you have to set up, you have to establish as part of your official compensation package, and that's why it has to be identified as such.
Okay.
Even though you don't get stipend or health benefits, it's still part of.
These are considered.
Compensation package sometimes.
Thank you.
Okay, so these could go quick, but we will have, we would go one at a time. And so on the first one, it's the mayor, so it's me, um, looking for a motion to accept resolution number twenty five dash fifteen, a resolution establishing official compensation pack for the mayor for food, beverages, and other city-related item.
Mr. Mayor?
Council President Miller?
I move the council approve resolution twenty five fifteen, mayor official compensation package as stated.
Should I do my thing first?
Yeah, you can declare a.
Okay, before, I, I do declare a conflict of interest, so I will not discuss or vote on this one. We have a council president Miller makes a motion to approve, any seconds?
Second.
Council Santiago makes a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I abstain. Now, motion twenty five dash sixteen, this is a resolution establishing official compensation package for the city councillor positions with terms expiring in twenty twenty six, currently held by Jeanette Santiago and Kim Holmes, and applying to any city council subsequently holding those positions for food, beverages, and other city-related items. Council Santiago?
I'd like to declare actual conflict of interest, everything from, uh, discussion or voting.
The other conflict of interest.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll also declare a conflict of interest and refrain from voting or discussion.
Holmes, Council Santiago, any, um, motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve resolution number twenty five dash sixteen.
Battery level is low.
Establishing an official compensation package for city councillor positions with terms expiring in twenty twenty six, currently held by Jeanette Santiago and Kim Holmes, and applying to any city councillors subsequently holding those positions for food, beverage, and other city-related items.
Thank you, as, a motion by Council Jacobs.
Second.
Second by Council President Miller. My discussion there, um, that won't cover the third person that expires at that year, that'll be a later one. So going forward.
We combined Joel and vacancy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, first and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, we only had three people be able to vote for that.
I see a majority of four here.
Okay, that's all we need, we only need four total.
Right.
Three of five. Motion passes. Three, zero, two abstentions. Resolution twenty five seventeen, a resolution establishing official compensation pack for the city council position currently held by Joel Haugen, the city council position currently vacant, and applying to the city council subsequently holding those positions for food, beverages, and other city-related items.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Jacobs?
I move that council approve resolution number twenty five dash seventeen, as so written.
Councilor Jacobs, motion to approve resolution twenty five seventeen, any seconds?
Second.
Second by Council Holmes, any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries? We're here. Couple more here, resolution number twenty five eighteen, resolution establishing an official compensation package for the city councillor positions with term expiring in twenty twenty eight, currently held by Marissa Jacobs and Tyler Miller, and applying to the city council any subsequently held, holding those positions for food, beverages, and other city-related items.
Mr. Mayor?
Council President Miller?
I abstain, uh, for an actual conflict of interest from this vote.
Any more conflicts of interest?
Mr. Mayor, I abstain from being.
Council Jacobs? Council President Miller abstain. Any motions to approve?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty five eighteen, as written.
Motion by Council Holmes, second by Council Santiago, to approve resolution number twenty five eighteen, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Three, um, two abstentions. Resolution twenty five nineteen, a resolution establishing official compensation package for the city scapus employees for food, beverages, and other city-related items.
Mayor?
Council Jacobs?
Move council approve resolution number twenty five dash nineteen, as written.
Council Jacobs, motion to approve resolution number twenty five nineteen, any seconds?
Second.
Council President Miller, seconds, any more discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution number twenty five dash twenty, a resolution establishing an official compensation package for the city of scapus public officials for food, beverages, and other city-related items. This would cover all of our committees.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Jacobs?
I move that council approve resolution number twenty five dash twenty, as written.
Councilor Jacobs, motion to approve resolution number twenty five dash twenty, as written, any seconds?
Second.
Council by, second by Council Santiago, any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. It just, you know, we, we've actually made some cuts, um, back in this too, so we've been trying to be financially, cautious and observant, and so we've actually cut back, so appreciate that. Uh, moving on to our calendar. Moving up to month of August, starting August first, Friday, movies in the park every Friday night in August, and continuing every Saturday in August, uh, farmer's market, nine to two P M. We have on August fourth, the Urban Renewal Agency meeting at six P M., followed by a council meeting at seven P M. We have a work, council work session August eighteenth, starting at six P M., city council at seven P M. E D C meeting August twenty first at noon, and potentially a planning commission meeting August twenty eighth at seven P M. Well, it's good. Um, on to our updates from city manager Ben Burgner, any update?
Uh, reminder, I think you, Mayor Vagis, reminder the legal cities, ball. Reminder, I thank you, reminder the League of Orange Cities Ball Conference is now available. For you to sign up, that is the first week of. Scheduled for the first week of October, it is in Portland, so it's not too far away, it's a great opportunity to go down there and participate with League of Orange Cities, get some. Good classes and trainings, it sounds like there'll be some on some of the topics we talked about today too, which is fantastic. If you are interested and you have not already, reach out to Susan, she can help you get signed up or. I'll send it yourself to do that as well. The Meiser property is officially been needed over, we've got that recorded in the last couple of weeks, so we are now moving forward, getting this through the fencing and move forward with. The preliminary things that we had agreed to in that deed, fencing and. Trails and some other minor things in there with the budget that we have for that to get started. The basalt well, we did get some good news just yesterday or last or the weekend, I guess Monday. They did hit a rock layer, basalt layer at eight hundred thirteen feet, so they at least hit rock finally. With now we need to drill down a little bit further to find water, so they're currently on pause trying to bring some new. Drilling equipment because it's a harder layer than what they've been dealing with, so they're take a little time before they can get. Going a little bit further on that, but that was positive that it hit before the thousand feet, which is. What we hit, but as or no further than limit there, so.
So are we like guaranteed now that we're gonna hit water?
No.
There's no guarantee on water.
Percentages might have went out.
There's guarantee on rock.
But we did hit the rock, did find the basalt layer, which beforehand we did not know where that was.
Sorry, that's not funny really, but.
The problem is, is yeah, is there water and if so, how deep underneath that layer is there, is that offer for, so it's just unknown at this point.
Is there any date, sorry, Ben, I mean, is there any data that reflects that sort of scenario where they hit rock for this area and then they drill? Eight, ten feet, under beat or water?
Right, I had actually asked that question today, I was like, well, how how thick was the basalt layer in Warren, we didn't have the data yet, so we're. Find some of that, see if there's any. But I'm sure it's different depending on where we're at, obviously we're a couple hundred feet lower than. Where Warren water is at, so. Yeah, well. Fingers crossed, I don't quite know where it's gonna be yet, but at least we hit rock, which was unknown. However, that would be so, good news, moving forward. Discussions continue with Luma Vista. Bidding how to go through this one, it's not obviously an exact session, so the the most recent discussion we had with them. We met with the county, sat down, the county reaffirmed a lot of the. Points that I had been making that we should refer to our development code, the county's development code, not be so specific in a lot of areas. So a lot of things that we had talked about before, we were able to simplify and bring down. The one thing that we are currently on, any feedback from the council from. Is the, and this is not even known at this point if it will happen, so we talked about the gate, potential of the gate. They're wondering, they're not looking to control park hours, they did want to consider having gate hours that were probably gonna be. Hour or two less than what our park would, so that would give people time to get out of there and not for people to go up. It's starting to get dark at nighttime. The park would still be open through our normal hours, it's just their streets, so they can still access any other way or walk up, they just wouldn't have vehicle access. So they were wondering, well, that that was their request is to have. They're varying depending on the time of year, but between. Thirty minutes and two hours depending on the time of year, in summer or the winter to kind of have that gate closed. Prevent traffic. People up there already, stay up till it's closed, come out and exit, it'll be automatic. The caveat beyond the fact if you're willing to to work with them on that, which. Yeah, I'll leave that to your opinion, if you feel it's reasonable or not, if we didn't feel it was terrible proposal from the staff, it is a proposal. Was there was feedback from the fire department that they wouldn't approve a gate in the first place, so it may not even happen, which then kind of throws a wrench in our. System anyways, that's kind of what they're hinting a lot of this agreement on is they want to make sure there's a gate, so it may just all snowball.
I'm sorry, did you say that they will not approve a gate?
The, there is discussion of whether or not the fire district would approve a gate, it has not been an official. Statement, it is limited discussions were likely, did they ever have a discussion beforehand? And then the county, the county commission have to determine whether they would fill it regardless.
Well, that's an interesting concept, because what if somebody with it being open to the public gets hurt up there in medical attention or whatever is delayed because of that gate? Who does the liability fall on?
Right, and and that's what, yeah, when I talked with Chief Pritchard, he just mentioned that in general, I mean, regardless of liability, they want to be able to help somebody and not. Pause additional harm by having delays, so that's kind of the stance. There there is a couple other things that he had mentioned, so that was, that part is still to be. Determined as we go through discussions, but if it were to be approved and they get support of the fire district. And maybe we don't want to decide or no, I just want to throw this out because they're trying, they want to, I'm trying to figure out the next steps with them, because they want us to draft the agreement with those in, take to the commission. So that the commission can make a final discussion decision on that. With our. What we're okay with, so they can actually make that decision on there.
Can you clarify who is they?
The hidden people.
Can we maybe pull this into an executive session so we can talk a little bit more? Freely and understand sort of. But where things are, yeah.
Is it covered by?
Can we? It's not covered under executive session, we could get a legal opinion on risk, we did that before. So that we could discuss what they were proposing, but this one is not as much a risk, it's just the gate, everything else is already discussed. Risk as far as our negotiations and agreement, that's more of a county's decision than ours.
Not potential litigation or.
Right, and this isn't about whether to approve a gate, we already kind of discussed that in the contract, it's just about the hours. It's where we're at, if if you're okay with hours outside of our park hours of closing early.
I'll just say I'm not in favor of limiting access to public spaces.
Well, I honestly, at this point too, I think we should table all discussion until the fire district makes their decision, because it's pointless and just a waste of time if fire districts isn't gonna allow the gate anyway.
Well, that was what I brought to them as well, the response I got from the county was. The commission could still override that if they chose to, and they want to just have what the verbiage would be, so they can make their decision. Now, would they or not, I don't know, there would be a, if if the fire district definitely put their one down, that would be a relationship. That could cause some, I don't know, so so I said, I'm hesitant of how to bring this up, but I did want to get at least initial feedback. And if anything, I like that feedback, so that's kind of the direction I want to go, is I don't think it's time for us to put that down yet, until it's this, until it's actually figured out with the fire department, so.
Is there an indemnity agreement that's gonna come with this too? Because I do get concerned about there being a gate. And then there'd be a potential delay for public safety services, whether it be a fire, medical, or any other emergency. And then who's responsible for that delay in service because of that gate?
So yeah, we do have that in the contract that we we talked about who has responsibility, so those would be discussed as part of.
Are they gonna indemnify the city as well?
Yes, for things that are related to on. That that are their fault, like their visitors, their people compared to people using our park.
I would much rather wait till the fire district cameras out their decision and then. We can have the discussion, that that's my preference.
Which is great, that's what I wanted to go back with, but I want to get councils' direction to make sure that I have that behind me, is that's how you want to go.
Is once they make their decisions, but you just said it's up to the commissioner? And and I'm just wondering, there isn't a part of our parks master plan, and so why does the county have say?
The county has say on a gate for their road. Because it's not actually closing our park, our park can still be open and still have access, has access from different places, they can still walk up and have access to the park. This is in control of their road and their gates, their process is where this is at, so. That's on their side and their legality for them to figure out, I I can't speak a whole lot to that, because I don't know.
Well, it would be great to find out from them if they decide who and answered those questions, would they be liable? I mean, if you approve it, you're liable, that's that's my opinion.
I'm assuming the gate is only gonna be closed later at nights, so go through the night. And you can still walk behind it, you can still walk other directions, but it's to keep. Cars from drive traffic from driving up there mostly after dark.
Have there been instances of that currently?
Of people driving up there?
Have the police had to respond to any instances of vehicles parked up there after dark?
Right now, it's not a city road, so.
It's all not from scappus, base department assignment, we're up now. Can't stop by Columbia County Sheriff's Office, but I I don't know off the top of my head, I believe so.
Unless there was a crime, they wouldn't really call. Here's your backup for that. But that's just the feedback I was looking for, like I said, it's hard to, I I know it's in public session. I just wanted feedback of if that's kind of how you're feeling, get that discussed, say, you know, like, missions need to. Hammer that out, they're gonna allow it, then we can figure out hours.
And I'd like to be able to change it later, if you know, if we develop a park, you know, could change as as we add amenities, as we add lights, as we change things and you want it to be able to. Be renegotiated or talked about every so often.
That's gonna increase the potential calls for service for public safety as well when we develop it too, so there's that piece of it.
Once we deem that the road is good enough for as much traffic as we would think, you know, we have to. Fight enough, is it gonna handle? Or going up and down at the same time, I mean. Are they turning the road over to the city, I mean, all those things.
Yeah, we'll get the contract when we finally get to that point of any of the. The clauses. Viable, so we can, you know, really go through that and make a little more or find over the fine detail. But yeah, the main part is that we pretty much have the contract, what we had discussed for other than those gate hours. Which is a new addition, so. All I really want to hear from the commission and the fire district to settle that first before we.
Have you heard that the county is gonna require them to carry insurance? Because homeowners insurance wouldn't cover that, because it's a roadway, so that means.
They did talk about having an H O A to help cover some different things like road maintenance or a city. Like community organization of some type to help unify some of those, I don't know the specifics yet, but they made more discussions.
What I'm getting at is finding an insurance carrier that wants to assure that ensure that might be a problem, or the premium might be so much that it changes their mind too. So it seems like there's some things that need to be worked out ahead of.
Right, and those they were brought up, so they they have to solve that as well.
We become on the line as well, because it's our our property, it's our property is on there too, other than the gate hours, you know, which. We'd be just as responsible as all the homeowners, because it'd be partly of our road too. Okay. We're good?
Yeah, no other update to this then. Oh, we. Do I know what's official yet? I'll I'll get back.
Hey, thank you.
It's supposed to be this morning, I checked.
Ben, quick question, so are they just trying, are they trying to take, they're trying to take over ownership of the road though, right?
No, so as part of that, they would rescind their vacation. So it'd still be a public. Right away. That is privately maintained, which is how it currently is.
That's really wonky, that's putting a gate on it and that.
You see gates on parks all the time.
My technical term wonky.
Wonky, that's a good technique.
I drive around Portland a lot, you see gates on parks a lot, cars out after a certain hour. I mean, and you get people get hurt in there in the middle of the night, you gotta have ambulances come in, I mean, it's.
Decorational need.
Okay, thank you, update council, let's go, Police Chief Blue Ellen.
Good evening, Mayor, and also Council President and councilors. Not too much going on, so last week we hired a new officer, Shane Davis, he's currently with the Washington County. Pre-academy over there, does a cost department, anything besides, of course, equipment and his salary. It's gonna be a good course to get him accommodated and and also trained up for goes to basic academy hoping in September. Moving forward this week, we're looking at starting a. C R T or Community Emergency Response Team, I talked to Mr. Curry Pardue, I believe it's last name is, he sits on a board with me with the Homeland Security. Commission here in Columbia County, so he'll be attending as well. And it's really trying to go to goal number three, he also provided me information for emergency action plan, so this really was kind of worked towards that. Community Outreach, sub comes Saturday, will be, I'll be out at the River City Speedway. They have a first responder night, we have apparatus parades, we'll be doing that, and the mayor already talked about it, starting in August. We'll be back out with the community flipping burgers and hot dogs for people out there too as well, so. And that's just some of the highlights for the P D and. Those big things, just working on code enforcement and getting that done. We look at this, our, some of our statistics we reported, we have increased our parking. Violations and addressing those two as well, but it's gonna be ongoing thing, they'll never stop. So, but we're continuing to work on that. Ben, any questions from the council or public, that's all I have right now.
I have questions.
Yes.
Chief, I saw that response team that you're talking about, so what types of, I mean, what is the, I guess, the purpose of the?
Actually, so this is rightly in the brainstorming phase right now too as well, I know it's also coordination, I did some research, I don't, I'm not an expert at this at all. But I know that FEMA also produces, I think, have information for a team, but the whole thing is, if there is some type of natural disaster. Is to have additional resources, people who ever receive training and coordination to help respond to that, and also to make people better prepared in the course of a natural disaster too. I'm very fortunate, I have a lot of good sergeants now that helps me alleviate some of my other things that we're doing in the police department and just trying to bring this stuff back to. And just make our community more informed, more prepared, just in case this natural disaster happened, like unfortunately in the state of Texas that we saw. To respond to it, scappus centered to with the community members and just help bridge that, bridge that liaison between us and the community. God forbid if that happens within our city of scappus or limits.
Thank you for that, Brian, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, not necessarily for the chief, but just in general. Did we ever find anything out or make any progress on the complaints that we received regarding the electric vehicle charging stations?
Yes, so I think Benjamin, City Manager talked last time, we went out there. We gave one of the respondents, I can't remember her name, the information about how to go ahead and contact us for those type of complaints. I know during my absence when I was at vacation, Mr. Saku, I believe, he reached out to Tesla for for signage. And they kind of pushed back from that, so my plan now is just to use our account, maybe from a police fund, get some signage. Make sure it's okay with Tesla and the charging station, just put that on there from there. I can tell you at least from me being here, I checked on it, I haven't seen anything, I'm not here at night, because we use my shifts over at six or seven o'clock, but. I'm in the office a lot and I haven't seen any, heard any loud music in my experience, but I'm not saying it's not happened afterwards.
I know we do have an agreement with, I don't know who precisely, I think Susan Mazit. That we did have to, yeah, it might be a P U D. And I don't know what it says, but I would imagine, I don't remember it having anything to do with signage restrictions, so I would think that we would be. You know, free to put whatever signs we feel.
Yeah, my plan is just to have made Council President, like I said, I remember Dave, I saw the email traffic that he reached out to Tesla about them possibly providing something, so. I think they have to, I don't, I'm not an E V guy, I have a forerunner. But I'm going to see if there's any issue with that and just get those things posted here. So that's my plan going forward with that too as well.
Yeah, the reason that we contacted Tesla was on their specific charging stations, because it notices the signs, if not, separate from there on our sidewalks. But yeah, our agreement with the PD is just to make sure that they're open twenty four seven. I believe I mentioned last time, we did get a chance, we had me, Dave and Chris go down, we actually were able to talk to a lot of Tesla owners, several Tesla owners, just about their cars. And how they charge, see if we could somehow configure it different, by the way that they set it up, they have to back in. But yeah, so we're. As you mentioned, the only thing we could really identify for code or anything else is. That we can put some signs to keep reminding them, but then if there was a noise concern that they they report that. At night, whenever it if it's past a few hours for that. That they could report that to the police, they could come by and actually do something about it for breaking if it is too loud. So. We gave out their information, hopefully that information will be on there, remind those noise ordinance. And turn off the lights at night. And turn off the lights, um, at night.
And that's as a courtesy, right, I mean, that's not necessarily a code, but.
Yes.
Courtesy, please turn.
To my knowledge, I don't think there's any violation for.
Saves their battery.
Having your lights on during the nighttime, unless like a high beam on roadway, um, front of the world, and there's no ordinance, to my knowledge, that prevents.
At the same time, we had issues with people about, I mean. We can't put any signs up there, I mean, it, it's, it's gotta be open to EV chargers, you can't go to the library, you can't just pull up and park there and go into the library.
Yes, it's actually a state law that it's, you're now, if you're a gasoline powered vehicle, you're not supposed to park there at all, it's actually a state law. Should be a violation itself, if they law.
If an ordinance would help, definitely let us know, but it's not like you're not, it's not like you're going up there saying, hey. We need you to do ABC and they're not doing it, so an ordinance probably wouldn't help for enforcement purposes, but, um, anyway. Whatever becomes an issue, you think it'd be helpful, definitely bring it forward.
We'll do, and we're gonna keep working on this, I mean, it's good to hear these complaints that come through from the citizens and just keep pushing it, so.
I don't, I haven't, I don't know if you can do this, can you turn off those machines at a certain time, or are they constantly on?
I, I, that's, I don't have that technical knowledge, and I think like City Manager said, I think we're, have a requirement, that may be more to city side for him to talk about. But they're supposed to be available twenty-four seven, um, to the general public, uh, for that, like I said, for me. Ben's closer to me, to them, I, I haven't heard anything too crazy, but I'm not saying it's not happening during the nighttime.
So every, everyone was full the other day.
Always break down anyway.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Anything else?
No, sir, that's it.
Uh, Community Director Lori, Lori Oliver Joseph, do you have anything besides what was your report?
Yeah, um, just want to acknowledge that I heard the complaints we had at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, I will work with Ben and my department to, um, see what we can do. I have been aware of the ongoing issues, um. But let us, you know, talk internally and then we'll connect back with you, Joe.
Yeah, that's good too, because I'm going forward, we have other developments going to be going on too, and it's nice to maybe.
We do, yeah, I think it is unfortunate that, um. There is something about the geology in that area that I think is making it slightly worse. I do know that they are following standard construction practices. Uh, I do know that they are operating as far as we know within their permit, um, you know, abilities, so. Um, not to say that I don't hear what they're going through and that it's absolutely awful, uh, but we will continue working on that.
All right, so. I mean, they are following the, the processes and all that and, um, checking all the boxes, but now that. It's, it's aware to the engineers and the city that that land has issues, which probably wasn't known. I don't know, or wasn't addressed earlier, so then isn't there a way that we, I, I mean, I, I think adjustments to that or talking to the, you know.
Yeah, and we'll look into all that, but, um, just a little bit, I will say now that I have heard. Is that they are following the guidance of their geotechnical engineer in terms of the equipment they're using on that site specifically for that site.
Is anyone, uh, as a city checking up on that? Because that's what I've heard is that there's, they say they're doing it, but they're not. So are we checking up on that?
Yes, we have, yeah, we have our engineer and inspector, uh, Reed Kelly out there regularly.
And they also do have their third party.
Special inspectors.
Special inspectors that have to. Approve and look at if they're doing the, meeting their standard procedure or the standards of construction. So, and, and they're giving us those reports as well to verify that they're meeting state standards.
Other than saying, they're telling you what that state standard is based on that geo, that, that land, is that we can only use this many tonnage, you know. It will show you what development, what processes they have to go through. On that specific type of land.
That's correct, yep.
Is that funded by the developer?
Yes, the developer's responsible for hiring their own geotechnical engineer.
So I think for me. Therein lies, I think, a potential problem. So, trust but verify. This is concerning, I've been hearing this since April.
Yeah.
And I've brought it, you know, funnel, uh, provided those individuals to get in contact with our city manager. Who I know connected your group in. I just walk that area every morning and I only get a glimpse of what they're experiencing.
Yes.
And it is quite concerning, so whatever we can do. I think, trust but verify, and if it requires us bringing in as another option to validate what they're saying. Because we do need to protect them and. I think it would be terrible if our only response back to them is you have to deal directly with that. Builder, and it sounds as if how they're being spoken to is, is really just. Quite alarming.
Always two, yes, absolutely, always two sides, but point taken very clearly.
Where Kim and I are in that general area too, and I mean, my, it does like, um. When I first started, I thought, it's like, is there an earthquake happening in there?
Yeah.
Because the whole bed shakes.
Yeah.
If you're, like, starting at seven o'clock or, you know, and, um, but yeah, things on the walls are shifting, cam lights. You know, we just had our house completely updated last year, like, yeah, cam lights are starting to, like, you can see air gaps, and luckily I don't have any of the sheet rock issues. Or any of the structural type things that the other folks are citing, but oh my God, I can only imagine. What they're going through, um, Lori, after you guys look into it and see if there's anything that we can potentially. If we have any sort of enforcement authority or anything, I think that's what, really what the question is.
Sure, right.
City has any sort of, you know, legal recourse to be able to help. Um, but in absence of that, maybe we can try to get a meeting together with the developer and the homeowners up there. I can imagine that's going to be kind of tense, so I do have that in my, you know, back of my head too, but, um. Like, I think it's Marissa said too, I mean, if our only response back is sorry, we can't help because we don't have any statutes or legal authority to be able to get involved. That seems like the natural, like mediation type path that we can.
And I, I believe that's more or less happened, but until we, um. I just want to make sure Ben and I have a chance to talk through it and make sure we're all agreeing on what's been taking place. To this point.
Know that they're mean, they're, they're following their procedures, but is there even another step that.
Right.
They could do that would mitigate some of this, but they don't have to because it's, their tech, their testing came out, but maybe what would that take? Like the one, if they just slow down, you know, if there's something. Smaller equipment, well, it's not efficient enough, or it's going to cost more, I mean, is there other things that can be done?
Right.
Not that they have to, but.
Yeah.
I'd be really curious to know too, and I don't think our legal counsel, um, you know, practices this area, but is there a liability?
That's definitely.
Not, I don't think there's a liability for us.
Correct, yeah.
I'm, of course, that's their responsibility to figure out, but I'm just, I am curious if. This could potentially result in some sort of class action from the homeowners against the construction company or.
They absolutely could, and that, that's really the, the remedy that thus far we have been able to identify with, and which costs money, and it's unfortunate. That's not answer anybody wants to hear because that costs them a lot more money. It's harder for them than it would be the construction company who does this all the time, have to, to go through that. Process, but there, there is a certain part, and we, we want to go back and look, see if there's anything that we've missed, we'll reach out for additional, I mean, we have gone through this quite a bit, we have responded. Um, last time I talked to Stu and I might have responded right away, I gave you guys copies of the response, so it's not that they weren't responding. But there is a certain point, and he gave the example, if a car ran into your house, you don't sue the city, the city doesn't have any recourse, it's not our place. Um, you're, you're suing a business or a person that caused damage or tort to you. And that, that is the remedy that the state or the beds or local or whatever has given to go through that process. We're going to see if there's another, I mean, we'll go back and see if there's any other besides that, I mean.
I'm really hoping that their homeowners insurance covers it, and then their homeowners insurance can take it upon themselves to.
Right.
Right, I mentioned that to Stu, I was like, maybe you should start with your homeowners insurance because they have legal and they don't want this claim.
That's right.
They will fight their legal for you, and it will probably cost you a lot less, but yeah, a class action would be a route to go as well. Um. But yes, there is liability to the contractor, that's why they have insurance, that's why they're bonded. They should have to pay if they're causing damage, it's not, they don't just get scot-free.
And it's not just property damage, it seems like they were physically and emotionally damaged. So, I mean, that, that for me is just, that's immediate, because they don't, they can't, you, you go home. To relax or, you know, you can't live, you can't live in your home, and that, for me, that's just heartbreaking, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to look to going forward on our codes and stuff for this future developments, you know, are there things where maybe we do the geotech? We ask for a second, you know, there's other things, if it is really specific just to that area, that might be one thing, I mean, are we hearing anything from the Dutch Canyon? Um, people living right there, and I live right there, I didn't really hear, uh, so it's, could be completely different.
Yeah, and I think, like you're saying, every site can be so unique that, um, nor would the city wouldn't want to like peer review. Or, or have to, you know, review every geotech report in the future. Um, but point taken that it's something to consider, so again, we'll follow up on that and, um. Certainly, we heard what was said tonight. Um, just one other quick update, um, August fourth, you will have a land use application coming to you. It will be a big packet, uh, I apologize, Susan has to keep her schedule for getting packets out. Uh, it is a comp plan map amendment from industrial to, uh, commercial. And zone change from light industrial to expanded commercial. And a proposal to approve a self-storage facility on the cinnamon tree property. Uh, Planning Commission did hear the application last month, uh, and recommended approval. And you will have their full staff report with findings, uh, and a council staff report, uh, at your August fourth meeting. For public hearing and August eighteenth for a second reading, um, of that ordinance. Uh, please reach out as you're going through that packet, you have questions, just open door, reach out, happy to answer them.
Is that all related to the cinnamon tree development, uh, everything you just mentioned?
Just the cinnamon tree parcel.
Okay.
Just that nine acre parcel.
And when do you think we'll get the packet?
Uh, whenever you would typically get, um, a packet.
You can go through the packet, the Planning Commission packet.
You can absolutely do that, it's already available. It, it's all in there.
All there minus their recommendation and.
It was the last meeting, yeah.
Do we, I'm sorry, it's getting late, but I just have one more question with the whole storage unit thing, because, you know, they. Their har, their high ROI, so that an apartment, so are we expecting, or is there anything that we can do to limit? The storage unit development, not in this, but going forward in the future, because otherwise we're going to have. Storage units developing on all of our commercial land.
Only if there's a, a, a need for more units, right? So this is supplying a huge amount of need for this community.
He's done a bunch of studies and this is what they said, and it wouldn't pencil out on industrial land. So we don't have a lot of commercial land available to continue to do this over and over and over. And, um, in the industrial land we have, um, I don't think it would be beneficial.
Right.
Do it based on their.
I will say also, there is a limit, uh, for indus, there is a limit of three acres, uh, facility size. For storage facilities in our light industrial zone. So it's not going to monopolize that, but it is outright permitted in, in expanded commercial. But again, this is meeting a huge need, I think he said it's over four hundred units. But.
For what area is that study?
Uh, the whole, uh, this whole region even, well, you know what? Let's save it all for the hearing, we shouldn't really be going into that right now, but, um, great applicant question. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did notice too, on the bottom, you've got a, the, the trail from St. Helens Capus that they're kind of looking on.
Yes, yes.
It says you kind of will be looking for four to six members to serve on that.
Yes.
Um, we did have the Park and Rec Committee people that we might reach out to, to see if they're interested in, um, being on that committee.
Absolutely. Yeah, there was, um, I think they were interested in having like a planning commissioner, a city councillor, representative, Parks and Rec representative. Who might pull someone from EDC, maybe a couple from Parks and Rec, you know, um, and maybe a citizen at large.
Great.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Jacobs.
Yes, um, I would just like to thank the residents that came in this, today, uh, public comment. And expressed their issues and challenges they're having with the development, um, the user property is probably well. The wastewater treatment property development. I hear you. I empathize with you and, um, we will get back to you.
Thank you. Counselor Holmes?
Uh, yeah, um, just want to thank council and the city manager for the good thoughtful discussion, um, this evening on the work session. Look forward to continuing work on that, um, I will be meeting with the chief tomorrow to chat through my experiences. As a, a net certified, um, citizen in Portland, uh, for our emergency planning. So looking forward to just sharing that experience with you and see where we can go, and if you need a counselor to volunteer for the bike trail project. Now that my fifty-year plan obligations are winding down. I'd be happy to throw my hat in.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Santiago.
Okay, uh, so I'm just going to give a kind of highlights of the EDC meeting that was, uh, held on, uh, twenty-sixth of June. I don't think I've shared this yet, yeah, we haven't, so, um, uh. Still the, uh, the spice project, uh, according to, to Paul, we're still running, I'm not sure this happened in June, so I'm not. Being glad it happened.
No updates.
No updates, um, the SB, uh, SBDC office is no longer SBDC, now it's SBRC. Um, the Resource Center, they kind of broke away from the SBDC, uh, model, um. Everything remains the same, they provide the same programs and the services. Uh, there's a PCC OMC, there's a new cohort starting in the summer, um, from Oregon State. Uh, let's see, at the port, a new tenant, I think it's called American Jet, they have a new tenant over there, like four jets. Uh, I heard Nexaventure is going, going out of business, I'm not sure with the update on that. Um, I heard it's closing in September, I hope not, that'd be very sad and disappointing, um. Uh, they said anybody that's interested in buying it to call Mary at the port. Uh, there's a drone company that's moving out, which is like, they have like twelve thousand acres, uh, room. And also they, uh, there's a group working on the hotel and they said to stand by for more information. Um, the library has, it seems like the library has, like, it's, they're our community, um. Uh, they have so many programs, I love, they're doing such a great job, and so right now they have a reading program that has four hundred kids. And they're also, um, doing movies in the park. And Lori, you mentioned you're working on the street grant program, uh, grant, I'm sorry. Uh, let's see, what else? Um, okay, and my, uh, I do have a, uh, the city council. I remember I did put some, uh, email use, uh, possible, or a draft of a proclamation, I would like for you guys to take a look at that, that would be great. Um, and it says also, I'd like to bring up the, um, the, the charter, I know we talked about this earlier. That we can, uh, possibly do the four years terms for the mayor and possibly a stipend. I would like to bring, um, have that discussion, and let's see, what else? Um, again, about the, I, I do appreciate the, um, residents that came and spoke about that. And I can, I felt their frustration and my heart was breaking the, the whole time, and so I hope we can do, um. Do, you know, we can help them, some type of res- resolution. And let's see, oh, C E team, I did attend the last hour of the C E team meeting with Ben. Um, there was a, uh, the, um, new director or the new head of the employment department. And he is encouraging to get, if you have feedback, they're going to put up a survey, and so. If we get it, I did reach out to him that I, I have personal, um, feedback and, and if I have it, I'll. Pass it on, so we can all give feedback. Um, that's it, thank you guys, oh, thank you, um, Kim, and, um. Oh my gosh, my brain, I'm done. Counselor Jacobs, thank you for, for doing all the work of, of researching that earlier for work session. Counselor Jacobs, thank you for, for doing all the work of, of the research that you done earlier for work session.
It is getting late.
I'm getting there. I'm getting there. I've had a couple of senior moments this week. All right, thank you.
Just before I move on, we did get some information from Counselor Haugen. Um, he's, he agreed with everything we went over at work session. All looked good. Um, he's wondering about recruiting a high school junior, senior in September to service, uh, service student representative to council. I think we probably need to talk about that a little bit more of how it's decided and their role. So, um, we will, let's discuss that. Um, and then he'll bring it up at another meeting. Um, also like to, he wanted to briefing on the adventure fest. So maybe if we can invite JJ or get at least get an update either verbal or something on how the adventure fest went. Cause I know we're always talking about, do we want to do another thing, um, big, big event? Um, let's get an update on how that all went and, um, before we see, but that was from Joel. Uh, Council President Miller.
Uh, everybody has pretty much said everything on my mind. I, I do want to, just because the importance of it, just reiterate the, uh, the thanks for the community members coming in and sharing their experiences with the development that's going up on, um, keys. And it is my hope that their homeowner's insurance will step in because that, it probably is gonna be the quickest path to actually getting things fixed, um, for them. Um, see, uh, I don't think I have anything else right now. Interested time.
Comes up. Um, I wanted to thank the 50-year committee, like Counselor Holmes said, they are done basically now. And I'm looking forward to hearing their information and their feedback and on the, the 50-year plan. Um, I did read through here where, you know, all the cities, we do have an audit in Sep- September. See on social media, a lot of times they're asking about cities and audit. We do have an audit coming up. Um, I did go to planning 50-year and EDC, um, online the last month and good things there. And like, we'll see that, um, presentation in our next meeting for the property. Definitely thank you to Mr. Meisner's family and the family for donating the, the parkland. I'll be excited to get that developed. Um, that's all I have tonight. Um, I'm looking, we do have an executive session. We will probably not come out of it with any other information. So, but we will open it up and then close the meeting. But I probably need a motion to move the meeting past nine o'clock if needed.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just to confirm, we do not expect any action after executive session and open session.
I do not expect any. But that doesn't mean we can't probably, but I, if we're gonna say we're not, we probably won't.
Okay. And, uh, I will go ahead and make the motion that we extend the meeting past 9:00 PM.
So President Miller to extend the meeting past 9:00 PM if needed. Any seconds?
Second.
Second by Counselor Holmes, any discussion?
Can we order food now?
I'll pay.
Try to make it as brief as possible.
Taco Bell.
Well, those are favorite state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now going into executive session. ORS 192 dot 660 dash 2 dash I for employee evaluations. Representatives of news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All their members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back in the room. Again, it is employee evaluation is our first one, so I promise we'll try to make it brief, um, but effective and, um, for now, uh, regular meeting is adjourned for now.